Good evening. Time's now six o'clock. We'll call this December ninth County Council Main Door. You know, the invocation by Councilmember Yance called about the pledge of allegiance.
Summer. I've got word fairy tales and whatnot. Next time they do, they've a lot of prophecy in the Bible that's coming true every day. But this comes from second Timothy four, three and four. Well, the time will come when man will not put up with sound doctrine. Instead, to suit his own desires, they will gather around them a great number of teachers to say what the engineers want to hear. They will turn their ears away from the truth and turn aside the myths. That's right. Oh God, I regret this day, regret all the things you've given us for the great of this season, this season. Giving birth to Jesus Christ. Within we're saved rather than pretending. Oh God, be with us. Oh God, help us to follow your word, follow your ways, not the ways of the world. Yes, he's done. Christ, I would have.
That's why I use to the left, I've been out safe somewhere. City of public and why nation?
All right. And before we start with approval of the agenda, just a couple of announcements. Uh, and congratulations on Mr. Rankin, uh, who is, uh, representing District Two very well for the last few years. Uh, was elected to the State House for attendance for District Fourteen, and, uh, they do things a little different in Columbia, a lot of fronts, but they were sworn in last week. So as being such, he had to resign his voting rights and seat on county council. However, as a guest, he's gonna sit with us one last time. So we do appreciate that. Would you want to speak?
Yeah, I just, uh, yeah, just wanted to echo the same thing. We were sworn in last Tuesday in Columbia and our work officially began. So, uh, constitutionally, I'm not longer be able to serve in an official capacity tonight in this meeting. So if you see me, uh, making no votes, that is why. Uh, we just wanted to thank Chairman for the opportunity to still sit up here for one last meeting.
Thank you. And we are, uh, definitely proud of being excited for you. Um, you've already been, uh, risen to the top of your peers and, uh, we look forward to all the great things you'll do in Columbia. Just don't forget us whole folks down here in Lawrence when you get there. So. Um, a few others, uh, solving the audience, this beer, Ms. Chee. Uh, Ms. Ditcher Chee, who has served as coroner, uh, not only as the coroner, but in the coroner's office for a long, long time, and we are grateful for your service. Uh, she did not uh, run this last term and her term also expires at the end of December. And we just want to say heartfelt thank you for all you've done for this county and its citizens. Um, how you've supported them and, uh, in a time of, in a hard time, and the job you have is one that I definitely would not want. So thank you for all you've done for this county. Um, we hope you won't be a stranger. Look forward to all the great things you'll do in retirement, but thank you for your service. With that being said, we do have a few other folks with us tonight that are gonna be sitting in just new shoes shortly. And, uh, Ms. Paddock enough for starters will be uh, who's also worked under Ms. Cheek and, uh, uh, coroner's office. We're looking forward to your service and all the great things that, uh, you'll do for the citizens. We know that your compassion and how well you serve and the people of Lawrence agree and look forward to all the great things you'll do. As well, we have three new council members with us tonight. Um, Mr. Rankin's replacement, uh, Mr. Matthew Brownland for District Two, District Seven, Mr. Justin Lane, and certainly, and that's last but not least, but, uh, Mr. O'Leary Philson, uh, for District Six.
Yeah, tell them about.
Look forward to all y'all serving with us and, uh, thank y'all. Got a few trainings coming up and we'll get y'all sworn in first of January and we'll, uh, have you up here with us and serving for the citizens that elected you. So thank y'all, uh, for joining us tonight. We'll have a few other recognitions here later on in the meeting, but, uh, we'll start with those. Up first, we have approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda as the mayor.
Question.
Motion by Mr. Carroll.
Yeah.
Second by Ms. Clark. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? And I'll vote all those in favor. Please raise your right hand. Sid Z. Run. Uh, next we have approval of minutes from three meetings. Um, I know they're gonna upgrade their session, special call meetings on the twenty first of November, as well as the committee as a whole back on July the eighth. Motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion by Ms. Carroll. Second by Mr. Trump. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Or vote all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes six. See. All right. Up next, we have a few reports to counsel. Um, it's called Mr. Rick Green. Uh, he's here with us tonight from the, uh, Upper Savannah, uh, to give us some updates on transportation safety plan.
Chairman and members of council, thank you for coming before you tonight. I wanted to take a few minutes to make you aware of a regional transportation safety plan that has been waiting for our region. This is, uh, Federal Highway Administration, West D O T, plus us are working together to address the issues specifically of roadway departures. And roadway departure is when a vehicle's traveling down the road, leaves the road, um, strikes an object on the side of the road or comes back on the road and hits a car. Um, South Carolina has a high rate of fatalities and traffic accidents, period. Um, but for this type of roadway departure accident, um, the fatalities total of the total fatalities around the state, there are fifty-five percent of those come from roadway departures. In our six county, upper Savannah region, that number is sixty-eight percent. So we have a lot of these type of accidents focused on our, our particular part of the world, but in our state as well. Um, the plan looks at a lot of different types of issues. Um, there are, um, the grooves that appear in the roads that you see that D O T is putting out as they do some maintenance. Those are rumble strips. So if you get off of your line, it makes a loud noise. There are also a lot of, that's the most proper cost correct type of, of issue to address. Um, there's also light lighting signage, different kinds of things like that that can be put up. One of the things that we have to think about is we're working with the implementation of this plan. Is that S C D M P owns or manages most of the roads around here. Um, I know that Lawrence County would have some that they would work with as well, but uh, I guess I wanted to make you aware of this plan that exists. And as you work and make improvements to your roads that, that you work with directly. Um, you could use some of these types of ideas around curbs or around dangerous areas where, where cars have, you know, off the road before and there've been incidents. And as we work with D O T as a group, try to get maintenance issues addressed around the area with the point of this planning. It's a, there's some things to put there. The district engineers have, as I said, they were involved in the plan and they're they're very helpful in looking at it for us and, and, and using it. Um, we're also working with the state as well to try to get them to integrate some of these ideas, uh, around state law. Mainly I want to make you aware that the plan is there for you all to use, uh, for your, for your roads, for our roads together as we work with D O T. Uh, I can get your paper copies if you'd like. Uh, email them, uh, digital copy. I think the, uh, the board has that. But there are G I S files showing specific locations of roads around the county where there are maybe some, a bad curve or an area that they could be used to address some of these type of issues. Have somebody that can use those G I S files or need those G I S files. I could get those to you as well. And they could look at those specific parts of the county. Better than a paper map, a plan to see where some of these things are. So just want to make you aware again that this is here and it's for all of us to use together. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council on that report? Do you want to thank for taking the time to come join us tonight and give us that presentation? If you would send that G I S file, uh, to your contact. Also, is that, I'm gonna get it to Mr. Wilson on Public Works. I think we could use that, uh. But thank you again. Appreciate you coming. Thank you for all that the C O G does. We have several members of council that serve on here on the C O G and there's other members of the, uh, county, uh, see, I figured back there, well, he served for years. Uh, we thank you for all y'all do for, for Lawrence County.
Thank you very much.
All right. Up next, um, from the potato lines, um, John Lomas, uh, here to update us on some economic development activities. Appreciate you coming and joining us.
Sir, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Members of council, I'm John Lomas. I'm the president of Upstate S C Alliance, the Regional Economic Development Group for the Upstate Ten Counties. First of all, I want to thank y'all for y'all's support for our organization over all the years. We, um, really, really work hard, uh, to try to bring as much economic development to the region and to Lawrence County as we can. Every day we work very closely with John Coleman and his staff at L C D C, as well as with Chairman Patterson, who serves on our executive committee. So just start out by thanking you for your, your support. I just want to give a little update on what we're doing and some of the activities around the Upstate. You can just run if you want to. So, um, talking a little bit about the last five years in the Upstate, we had about eleven billion capital investment, twenty-seven thousand jobs, and that, that goes through twenty twenty-three. If you look at the listing, uh, there see more than several companies from Lawrence, um, C F, of course, and others, but, you know, a lot of activity and we continue to have a lot of activity each year. And I'll talk a little bit more about what's going on this year, but hundred and sixty companies have announced new locations in the Upstate in the last five years. Interestingly, thirty-seven percent of these projects are international companies, which we continue to be, um, able to recruit those and continue to be very interested in our community. Um, Lawrence County has many international companies, um, C F and, and others who have been very successful in years here. About forty-eight percent of, um, jobs from new companies, fifty-two percent from existing companies. So twenty twenty-three, um, was a good year, about two point one billion in capital investment, three four hundred and fifty-five jobs, fifty-five total announcements. We're tracking a little above that for twenty twenty-four. Um, I think, um, we're gonna see some more announcements before the end of the year, but we should be a little bit above those numbers. So I think twenty twenty-four and going into twenty twenty-five, a lot of optimism. So what is our role at the Upstate Alliance? We are there in regard to awareness, identification. We're a marketing organization. We do business recruitment. Um, I'm on the, the top of the, um, business funnel. We're the ones going out and letting people know about the Upstate region, letting know, um, why they should consider us as a source. The way our, our process works, we'll, we try to find the companies that will look at the region. And once they start looking at the region, we send out information on all ten of our counties. And the company makes the decision where they're gonna continue looking. So they may say, okay, want to look at Lawrence. Then John Coleman and his staff will start working with it. We'll step out. Saclon Department of Commerce will get involved as well and they'll work with this project. So awareness, identification, then really the recruitment and then the negotiation of incentives on the local level and state level, and then our chambers of commerce and other organizations work to um, internally make the region a, a good place for business to, to be and to be successful. So our mission, pretty simply, I won't read the whole thing, but, um, market the Upstate for global business investment and talent attraction. We have been working to try to not only bring talent in to take the jobs in the region, but also, um, work with our technical colleges and, um, our local businesses on upskilling the, the people that are here to go into those kind of jobs. And our vision at Ten County Upstate S C region where business thrives and people can prosper, who have access to a diverse array of career opportunities. I really feel that over, as y'all know this, over the last thirty years, we've really diversified our manufacturing base. I mean, we continue to do that. So sort of what is our process? I've talked about that we're a lead generation business recruitment organization. So we attend a lot of trade shows across the country and the world. We, uh, go to different international target markets. We, we work a lot with, um, Europe, um, because that's continues to be a very strong market and even we're investing in Europe for projects coming here. And then domestically, you know, the Northeast, um, Detroit area has always been big, but across other areas of Southeast. Um, we do a lot of just direct outreach to companies that we identify and stay in touch with those folks and what the end results that we want them to come and visit, because we can get them to come to Lawrence County. They can see the great things here and the great economy. I think we got a really good chance of getting them to locate here. We do a lot of research, um, in different ways on companies and helping with demographics and wage information, uh, when the counties are looking together, most companies, uh, we host a lot of inbound events. We have site consultants here every year in the fall. They're only bringing about eight to ten site consultants here. And when I say site consultants, I mean firms or individuals that are registered companies looking for new locations. We also host a lot of international visitors here, um, and just companies. Like I said, if we can get the companies to come here and visit, got a really good chance of getting them to land. Marketing and storytelling is a big part of what we do. Yeah. Through our website, through digital marketing. And we actually still have paper, um, you know, handouts that we give. People, people, people actually still like to look at something. Um, and then I mentioned talent. We're really trying to help, um, cultivate talent in the region so that the companies that are here continue to be successful, we can all recruit and come. And then concept called Team Upstate. We are a public-private partnership. We have thirteen public sector units, um, that, including Lawrence County, um, that work with us very closely. And then we have about two hundred and thirty private sector companies that are members of our group. So getting those folks to work together, we can really be powerful. And we'll do, we really feel that economic development should be driven by our private sector in cooperation with the public sector. So as I said, right now about two hundred and thirty-four total investors, that number's actually a little bit higher. But we brought twenty-five new investors this year. And when I say investor, I mean like someone who worked for a law firm or accounting firm or construction firm, any, any company that wants to be part of the economic development process and will bring, bring their funds to us so, so we can be a part of the region, bring companies that they can work with. Public partners, um, across the region, we have the ten counties, of course, and then, um, we have six municipal members. Work very closely with all those folks, um, and it's a really, really strong team. Total population now is about one point six million across our region. Uh, that continues to grow pretty rapidly. So getting down to sort of the meat of what we do at the Upstate Alliance, we are constantly trying to find companies that may have an interest in locating here. Uh, so if you look at our pipeline, we added to during twenty twenty-three, two hundred and forty-nine new companies to that pipeline. We're on target to continue to do that. The reason that's important, these are the companies that have expressed an interest. Then we start working with them, sending them information. And hopefully at some point they'll want to visit, set our location. So in regard to how we work with prospects, we work very closely with Saclon Department of Commerce. We've worked with automotive council and other groups. As I said, we go to trade shows, we meet with companies at different trade shows and then have meetings outside of the trade shows in different, um, geographies with companies that they have. Our manufacturing base here. Uh, we cultivate leads in the pipeline. Those numbers I, I showed you, man, if we're constantly contacted via email, by phone, um, to try to keep them in, um, industry inbound events. We did, we bring a lot of industries here to see the Upstate and then outbound missions. We've, um, gone on a number of missions this year listed there, U K, Spain, Brazil, South Korea, Germany. But we've also been on several domestic missions, Detroit, um, California, um, Switzerland, Italy, several other countries, just call them. One of our big highlights from earlier this year, we hosted a conference here called the I A M C, which is the International Asset Management Council. Um, they, they brought in, uh, five hundred and thirty-five people from outside our region, mostly corporate real estate folks, but also, uh, site consultants and just general business folks. They came to the Upstate, learned a lot more about what was going on. This was a joint effort throughout the state throughout our region, bringing these folks into the Upstate. They were very impressed with what they saw. I believe it was their largest conference they've ever had. International groups coming in, um, see there, the, the Czech Republic and Basque, we came to Sparkberry County. Our only Czech company is, yeah, Sparkberry, but maybe we don't get one to Lawrence, okay? Uh, also Austrian automotive delegation that we brought in, um, and we're, see there, we're looking at the, uh, facility. Consult, consultant connections. I talk about bringing site consultants into the region. When we do that, we include our local economic developers and those pictures there are showing that we brought consultants in our local economic developers are meeting with them and sharing about the different communities. And then the consultants always like to go to BMW and drive cars. So we always get that, I get some. Um, building our pipeline, um, through the end of October of twenty twenty-four, we've done two hundred and fifty-two presentations about the Upstate companies and site consultants. Hundred and fifty-nine new leads in our pipeline. We've added some to that and then fifty-one, what we call requests for information. We have a lot of research tools and this is one of the things I think the counties and the cities really are able to take advantage by being members of the Upstate Alliance. We can help with getting information from all these different sources regarding demographics, wage, connecting to global, uh, company databases. It can just, uh, I feel like this really helps the local economic development office with things that they don't have to buy themselves because we have them created. So the R F I history for Lawrence County, um, these are the numbers of requests for information that we've sent. And if you notice, um, it said there have been fifty-one sent out, um, for twenty twenty-four and y'all qualified for fifteen, I'm not sure. Probably the one y'all didn't qualify, probably said they need to be three miles from a BMW or something like that. So that would be like the only one, but the rest, y'all have qualified, uh, to submit information. So three things that I kind of like to, to bring up, um, that I think are important, um, that the counties I feel like need to continue to focus on, one, um, industrial properties, um, honestly, Lawrence County has done about the best job of the, our ten counties developing properties, but the private sector and the public sector. Uh, y'all had, uh, a number of private developers that looked at properties, evolved properties or developed spec buildings. And then the cities and the county have done a really good job in continuing to put that to the, brought up, particularly on the interstates. Spec buildings are important. Um, if a company is coming in and looking at something, they might not like the spec building, but it might, they might, I bring them here. They might go into the spec building or look at other opportunities, but a lot of times we have to bring them to application. And then workforce. And one of the things, um, that I've talked about in the past here is just the importance of having a career center uh, for your high school folks. And I know y'all have talked about that a lot over time, but the community that have really strong career centers, it's that pipeline from the middle schools to the high schools and then to the technical colleges and, and beyond, creating those opportunities. So I think that's a really good opportunity as as you move forward and continue to look at really having a strong career. My tech has incredible soil here. Right about on the interstate. I think that's something that, that helped bolster that for the high school. Okay. That's all I've got. I wanted to be very, uh, mindful of your time, but glad to take it. Any questions, show them all over.
I like the idea of the international presence that we have, uh, in the Upstate, uh, also across South Carolina, because I think we are heavily involved in international businesses. Um, but, um, I think we were just at thirty-eight percent, but I do question a lot of them because I still sometimes I feel too strong. Out of country and not so much within the United States.
Yeah. And I mean, I, I think it's really what we see a lot of is the ones that are interested in coming. They want to be in this market in the U S. A lot of companies in the U S are already producing. They're already making the product here. They're able to, to work with, you know, our existing industries. Ones that we see are mainly companies that want to get a foothold in the U S and want to start producing. Um, and I'm trying to get this exactly right, but foreign, foreign direct investment generally, um, pay higher wages, um, and invest more money when they come into our you know, area of the asset companies do. But it's because the most valuable product in the world is one that's made in the United States. So that's why they all want to be here. So I understand what you're saying, but that's just the, the reality. These are the companies that want to be here. Um, and we just continue to see a lot of strength there. And if you look at how our economy's been built over the last fifty years, really, then from the Scholons and the BMWs and the C Fs, the Bosch's and all these that are playing the best with the money. So I understand your concerns.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Gosh, want to thank you. Uh, I get to work with you. It's a pleasure. I gotta do a lot of Upstate, especially Lawrence County and all those last pre-employment. Yeah, see the table, uh, turning the big projects and we thank you all for all that you do.
And thank you for, again, your, your service on our executive committee. John Coleman also served on the executive committee. I've had the local developer representative and, yeah, appreciate all the council does for us. Thanks. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. You know, you do the same.
Mr. Hayes, there any more reports, council this evening?
Yes, sir. One item. Um, as most people know, following the storm, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the South Carolina Department of Transportation for debris removal along roadways. Um, their Office of Public Engagement published a letter or really memorandum on December sixth last Friday regarding that debris removal. Um, so far they've, uh, removed approximately one point eight billion cubic yards of debris is the number they gave. But what they're asking people to do is to have all of the debris pushed to the right of way for pickup no later than the sixteenth of December. Um, so that's ten days from Friday. Again, I found this information out this morning, called, uh, called D O T, got it verified this afternoon. So this is the first relay of that information, but we'll continue to put it out. I know some of the media is here. Um, so again, they're asking for all of that debris to be by the side of the road, not in the roadway, just beside the road safely by December the sixteenth. Now, if you know a neighbor, friend or loved one that's having trouble getting that debris to the right of way, or they have a limited amount of right of way, um, they gave a number and I'm gonna give that number now, but again, it will also be published. That number is eight, five, five, four, six, seven, twenty-three, sixty-eight. Again, that's eight, five, five, four, six, seven, two, three, six, eight. Now, again, we, as far as the county is unfamiliar with the Department of Transportation's timeline, how long they're gonna continue picking it up. Um, it can be a matter of a few weeks, it could be a matter of a few months. We don't know. But what we do know is I have verified this information. It has to be out by the road no later than the sixteenth of December. So that's all I have.
All right. Up next, we have public comments. We had several posts that have signed up, uh, this evening. Uh, they are all in reference to, in the item eight B. Um, I'll call these names. You're welcome to speak now or here in just a minute. Um, the next item will hit, uh, will be opening the floor, uh, for anyone and everyone who wants to come speak on this. You're welcome to speak now as I call your name or if you're on the way to the official public comment opening, uh, public hearing opening, uh, in just a minute. It is up to you. Uh, first person to sign up was, uh, Mr. David Cleveland. Do you want to speak now or the public hearing?
I can speak while time.
If you want to.
Y'all probably don't know me. Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you. Make sure to phone me.
I want to speak, well, economic guy, I'm not, I didn't sign up for that, but can I speak on that presently?
It's public comment. You can speak on anything you like here.
I live in a other part of Lawrence County. Y'all sort of slide us up there. You leave these industries in. I think I can buy every piece of property that's adjacent to mine. But you could at least try and get these industries to support Lawrence County and hire people that live in Lawrence County and not somewhere else. My understanding, ZF Transmission's got less than ten percent of the people working there that live in Lawrence County. That's terrible. But let me get to my main topic. Fireworks. I've got a little farm here in court. I've got cattle and I don't have a horse. I have family members there. They have the fireworks. They're open about ten, twenty days a year. Like live. As far as I know, no one has ever approached any of those businesses that sell fireworks. Never approached me about fireworks ordinance. Some of the words in the word sort of slapped me in the face. It tells me I've got to go to my neighbors and ask permission to do something on my land. Be twelve hundred feet. They're talking a quarter mile. Now, where I live in Lawrence County, that's private property, even though I pay taxes. It's supposed to be mine. I can do what I want to. You can't come on my property without permission. She got the sheriff over here with you, with the one. So how am I gonna, somebody gonna get permission from me to shoot fireworks within twelve hundred feet? Quarter mile. The most explosive firework you can buy in South Carolina is only going to travel three hundred feet. I didn't know that. I've been shooting fireworks for fifty years. No reason I know that. It's because I buy some, they'll go three hundred feet. They are expensive and they do make a lot of noise. But I hear hunters, they don't ask permission. They got these high-powered rifles and shotguns. They make more noise than even the fireworks that I shoot. That to me, it's just not right. Somebody has to ask permission. Do something they want to do. Thank you.
Mr. Brooks.
Coming again when you talk about fireworks.
Dustin Holmes.
Derek Taylor.
I can wait.
Ms. Robber.
I'll wait. Sorry.
All right, next up is old business. Are there any council submissions for appointments this evening? So you know, move on to item D, which is the public hearing for ordinance nine seventy-six, the fireworks ordinance. Time is now six thirty-four and we will open the floor for public hearing. If you'd like to speak on the fireworks ordinance, ordinance nine seven six, please step forward and state your name.
I would like to speak on the fireworks ordinance. No, I have not done my due diligence on keeping up with the ordinance, but it has changed multiple times. I was told by my representative that this has been going on since July. The first time that this was in the minutes that I found was August. And then it was a different number. It went to committee and then it's come back. Couple of things that I feel strongly about when I spoke to my counsel. Lady, she said that this was the livelihood of people in her community. We have shot fireworks for five years. I think is how long we have owned out on A D H fireworks. We have not had anybody come and talk to us about this, nor have we seen any animals. I think that that would have been posted on the Facebook if that would have happened. But as a stakeholder, we were not contacted. The South Carolina Fireworks Association was not contacted. The people, when we talk about businesses moving to the upstate, we could have had our business and found in, we could have had our business in Central. But we chose to stay at home right across the road so that we could have money ordered in to Lawrence County. When we talk about a lot of these international businesses coming, how much money are they paying in taxes? Because we paid our taxes in Lawrence County to make sure that we are putting money and hiring people from Lawrence County. When we talk about your loss of business, I am a teacher, my partner is a teacher. This is to make our ends meet. We created a business to also put money back into the economy. We will lose money if this thing's poor because people aren't going to go out of their way to find who their neighbors are. We're going to start them out on feet, go to that person, have them fill out a piece of paperwork and come back. I teach high school. If it's more than two steps, people aren't going to do it. And so where is that going to put who's going to enforce this? Because this is enforceable by the sheriff. This should be complaint driven. Whoever is having their livestock hurt should go to the person that's doing it. You can also have your home registered as a no fireworks zone through the state of South Carolina. We already have an ordinance. Lawrence County also has a noise ordinance to where they could file under that. This is just an extra step for the people who want to actually shoot your fireworks. Also, it states in the ordinance within unincorporated areas of Lawrence County. Does that mean like the whole Lawrence County or just like the two places? Because from what I can find online, we only have two places that are unincorporated. But please take into consideration when you are taking money out of the pockets of people who are putting money and chose to stay in this area. When there are other avenues that people could take. Thank you.
My wife, Brooke Holmes, some concerns that I have with with this ordinance, yes, we didn't do our diligence, but I can tell you the time that I found out about it, I reached out to several people who were against this as well. Say I should keep up better with local government going on is definitely a point that I have taken. So I've been planning on being more active, but just some things, Austin Echo, like what I said. How can you get them to shoot on fireworks from your neighbor, from, you know, a person within twelve hundred or has a fence line within twelve hundred feet, I think is, you know, three football field is a little unreasonable. I think when this came, when we went to a committee, no action was taken. Think that should stand for something. I asked, like, there was no, the South Carolina Fireworks Association was not brought in as like a subject matter expert to to ask this information or to get any type of findings for what they already have and with this kind of specialty where there's a subject matter expert on. As far as they also have a revenue or an option, excuse me, to go through and actually register their property as a firework free zone. Then I would ask those people that are requesting this to go through, to go through that avenue or see, you know, civil with any type of damage to property that's being done. Then you're trying to punish a whole group of people of Lawrence County or take away rights from Lawrence County residents for a few bad apples. I think it could be handled a different way. I also think, you know, as far as with business owners, you know, no business, no fireworks business owner, and I'm sure you can probably look up to see which there's fireworks, how many fireworks businesses are in Lawrence County, to ask for input then. It's like that was another missed opportunity that could have been taken apart upon this. First, just saying, hey, we didn't get anyone really to say they didn't like it. We got people that said that they were against it, you know, or for the ordinance person being against it. I feel like that is just, you know, maybe there's a better way to advertise it. I don't know. But I will be more actively trying to seek more information from the local government and again, just to be more informed of yourself.
Eric Taylor, appreciate y'all here this evening. Probably a lot of what I'm gonna say is reiterating some of their points, but I think they're valid. But also, I'm a small fireworks stand in Hickory Town. And, you know, I started it about ten years ago and myself, my boss' two sons. And my son was born, so when he got older, I think that's all we could do. And now my daughter and my nephew kind of run it, you know, learn business, interact with people, give them something to kind of, you know, just learn ins and outs of things. And it's been a great experience for them. My boss' two sons, one of them graduated, one of them's about to graduate. The older one, you know, wrote his entrance paper. He didn't go to college, bought the fireworks stand, all the things you learn there, you know, I mean, it's been a very learning experience for them. I think this ordinance, you know, severe in the first place, like, I said, there was a lot of other ones in the county. A lot of the county people calls. When you start talking about a quarter mile, four hundred yards of places like, you know, from the fence line, a place like Hickory Town, Green Vine, Waterloo, Breakaway. I mean, you're eliminating pretty much the entire, you know, area itself. And that's where a lot of the small stands are. And that's where a lot of kids and people like to grow up and do things like that. And people, you know, a lot of people like living in Lawrence, because it is a, you know, a big, well, it's a big, it's a big town, you know. They, probably, people, in your city, they can't do like two fireworks, five horses. And I think this is gonna, you know, kind of severely blame some of that and hurt the businesses that are there. And, you know, the kids that are trying to go up and ask the property owner they've never met, you know, like fireworks five days from now. But my kids don't even know what they're doing after school today, much less, you know, what they're gonna do in a week. Then, so, and also, you know, I think like Justin and we're saying, it's my understanding that there's already a state ordinance in place that a livestock landowner can call, have their place registered, no fireworks going on. Problems come up after that, they can, you know, go about contacting the property authorities and go about that way. I don't see a need to further restrict anything past that. And it's gonna be some restrictions that I kind of find fault at with this particular one. Is that, that, you know, property owners, I think, have to file a complaint, you know, call into the complaint before any type of, you know, fine or anything's given. I think now it's, police can just kind of show up and write tickets as opposed to the complaint actually being called in, as it seems right. And also, it seemed like the first defense is a $500 fence. I mean, if my kid doesn't know, I probably, I went up to this tool box today, I texted, you know, called 15 or 20 friends of mine living in Lawrence, my age, have kids, you know, six to 15, and not one of them knew about it. And I guarantee you, how are those people living in 1200, you know, feet of the fence somewhere? So all of a sudden, these kids are gonna start shooting fireworks on New Year's, cop called up with all them $500 ticket on the first fence? That just doesn't seem right. Anyways, I appreciate your time and consideration.
My name's Rob Rucker, and I appreciate y'all giving us time to talk tonight. I live on the Mountville side of Lawrence. I know from what I've been told, a lot of the complaints and the issues are on the other side of Lawrence County. But I've got, me and my wife run four roller houses. I've got a seed stock, rich for herford herd cattle. We got horses, we got pretty much anything you can think of when it comes to running farm. You know, horses, both my kids are Rebio. We travel the east coast, go to Oklahoma. I mean, we got, we got a lot of money in horses, but on the other side of it, like the gentleman was saying earlier, Lawrence County is growing. We've got people coming into Lawrence County that have never gotten to live in the county before. They've all lived in the city, they come to the county. Now they have freedom, but they can shoot fireworks, they can shoot rifles, they can rifle whippers, they can get a horse, they can get a cow, they can get chickens. What, you know, that's part of living in the country. You shoot fireworks on the Fourth of July, because you're American. We're all proud to be Americans, you know. I think it's a shame that people think that they can tell other people, you can't celebrate your freedoms, your Fourth of July, any, any of that. I think it's, you know, and it goes back to animal husbandry. If you've got animals, you have to take care of them. You have to, you know, you know, it's Fourth of July, put your horses in the barn. You know, take care of them, that's your job, that's your God-given right. And he gives us the ability to take care of these animals, and we have to take care of them. Shooting fireworks is not gonna harm animals. Now, if somebody ran down the road and shoots a ball rocket, and that's a complete different scenario. You know, that's, I've called four or five people, and like, what is, what is your stance on it? People I know that have, you know, seed stock animals, you know, like our cattle, our herfrids are seed stock. So we, we sell them all over the country. I mean, people, that's what, that's what a seed stock, I mean, it's top of the top. And when you, somebody's harming that animal, that's when you call sheriff. When they're intentionally shooting fireworks or doing something to harm, that's when we got to stop to it. But just shooting fireworks to enjoy it and to be able to celebrate your freedom, to be able to live in the county, that's why would you move to the county? You know, that's why people live there. But I think that's something to really think about, is that, you know, we're all, we're all part of the American dream. And I know I'm living it, my parents got to live it. A lot of people are moving to the county, living the American dream, they can buy the house and shoot fireworks in their backyard. And it's a shame that a neighbor can say, well, you can't do that. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a come up to you to say, you can't do it. And you gotta get permission from them, knowing that they're not gonna give it. You know, that's the, that's the, that's the stance I'm at. And I think that's the, that's where, where we all need to be, is we, we have the freedom to live in the county, to live the American dream, to shoot fireworks on Fourth of July, we're pleased to. And thank y'all for your time.
So I want to kind of explain to some of these folks how this came about. This actually came about because of me. I'm with you, understand, I don't want nobody's freedoms taken away from them and everything else. But our freedom was taken away from us when we didn't know about a 1,200 housing development coming all the way down the side of our farm. We knew nothing about it occurring to us, so we had to deal with it now. So I'm talking about 1,200 homes blasting all fireworks next to our farm. So that's how this came about. I don't want to see people's businesses hurt because of this, because they, they sell fireworks and everything else. So, you know, it's a, this is a hard task right here, in my opinion, because of what has occurred to us versus the whole county. And, you know, we take care of our horses, I have crazy expensive horses, I put them in the barn when it comes time. I never had fireworks close to me before, but it, it, it's coming. I have very expensive horses that I don't want anything to happen to. We have cattle, and we're being inundated with homes, so this is where this has become a problem. And I, you know, I don't know the exact resolution to this, because I understand what the rest of the county's looking at and how they're looking at it. I agree, our freedoms, we don't want our freedoms taken away and, and more government control and stuff like that. But we didn't have a chance to, to have a voice in what's occurring next to us. So, and I was told when I very first started coming to council, you know, sorry, Ms. Garrison, but we can't do nothing about it now, because it's, that was in the past. Well, now here we are in the present with issues that are coming up from what occurred in the past. So, I don't know, this, I know this is third reading, I don't know if an amendment can be made to this at this point. But I say make an amendment to it, that everybody keeps bringing up the state law. Well, the state law is only gonna protect me if somebody's fireworks comes on to my property. I'm trying to get and stop 1,200 houses from blasting fireworks right next to my property, because it's only 30 feet off my property line. So, you know, maybe we can amend this to where the county can also have the same thing as the state does, with a little bit more protection, and let it be property owners that just want to put their property in a no fireworks zone. So maybe this is not county-wise, that it hurts other people and their businesses, but it protects people like us that are having to deal with 1,200 homes coming in the side of them, and possibly more homes coming on the other side of us, and possibly more homes on the backside of us. So, you know, we, we all know you can't stop people from selling their property, we know that's gonna occur. But maybe some other amendment can be made to it, that we still have that protection in Lawrence County. Because when I tried to call the Fourth of July when it started, something, you know, I mean, I had no means to get it to stop. And yes, my horses were in the barn, but that doesn't mean that they're not in the corner of their stall shaken or whatever it may be, because they're not understanding all that blasting going right up next to them or close to them now, that we never had before. So, like I said, I don't know if there can be amendment, but I still think Lawrence County needs something, because the state is not gonna, it's different than what we're looking for. We're not just wanting the fact that if somebody's fireworks comes on there, then we've got some kind of recourse. We're looking to stop all the noise from 1,200 homes of fireworks occurring next to us. So, you know, that's my suggestion, maybe you can go back and amend so it doesn't affect, but still let Lawrence County have something so that we have some teeth, because the state portion does it to me, cover what we're looking for and the fact that we have our development, we do. And the noise ordinance, I've talked about the timing of the noise ordinance. You know, it, it's seven o'clock at morning to nine o'clock at night. Well, Fourth of July, I mean, New Year's is gonna happen way earlier than nine o'clock at night, so that doesn't protect us either. So, anyway, maybe some kind of amendment can be made, maybe you can go back to something else to try to protect those of us in the northern end of the county that are having all the development and having all the homes next to us. Thank you.
I'm Ashley Rill, I am in the northern end of the county. I know we are at the third reading on this, and I know you've heard our story before. We, our livelihood is horses. We own horses, we board horses, we take care of 60 horses on Bourbon Road. It's our livelihood too. For me, it's a consideration of your neighbors. Fireworks are loud, fireworks scare livestock. We have 60 horses, we have a 16-stall barn, we have people that pay for full board, who have access to a barn, to a stall. And we have others that, that don't, they pay for pasture board. Horses and cattle are easily frightened by sudden movement, loud noises, and flashes of light. We, when you put a horse in a stall, that doesn't mean that that horse is safe, okay? When you put a horse in a stall and you have fireworks going on outside, that horse is actually more likely to get injured in the stall than it is outside. We had a horse last July the fourth, I believe it was July the fourth, that was severely burned by neighbors across the road that were, that were shooting rockets into the, into the air directly across the road. Even if we had been in, declared ourselves a no fireworks zone, that doesn't count the guy's property across the street. That means we are a fireworks zone. So, the gentleman has the ability to shoot fireworks, and, and that's cool, and that's, and that's all good. But then when it falls down onto our horse's back, or our customer's horse's back, and severely burns that horse, then we've got a real problem. So, for me, I, I mean, we're not trying to outlaw fireworks. I understand, freedom on your property, I'm a big advocate of that. But the problem is, it, it affects other people. So, you have your fun. Our horses are frightened, they run, they can get injured running through the dark, run through the fence, and that affects our livelihood. So it's a consideration of your neighbors, and that's all we're asking for, is a little consideration.
I'll figure again.
Yes, sir.
I understand Eric's concern. I know, I know one lady over here. Here's the issue though, they got a big subdivision going up there. I got 256 houses going on, less than a quarter mile from my house, across the interstate. I got almost a thousand houses. I can't control that. You know who controls all that? Every one of y'all. Every one of y'all has to do with that. You created this problem, you need to solve it, you need to get all sides involved, that's when you get things done. Leave the lawyers out, leave the sheriff out, get the people that are concerned about it, go to them, talk to them. I bet you, they can work it out.
All right, I'm repulsed again. Some of the, I didn't get your name, sorry.
Nancy Garrison.
Garrison.
Yeah.
Ms. Garrison came up and said, the housing development is 30 feet.
30 feet from a property.
30 feet from her property. With subdivisions, because we sell to subdivisions, usually your subdivisions are gonna have some kind of ordinance within there. There's a place to where you can shoot, there's a limit to how many you can shoot, and like what types, like we have different types that go up. I don't know how badly your horse was burnt, but usually with your fireworks, like, they don't go far. Like, you're gonna have some embers or whatever, but you would have to shoot a firework like directly at an animal. We shoot fireworks next to Mr. Cleveland's pasture, and those animals have been fine. I think that it's going to come to talking to your neighbor, if you have a problem with your neighbor, about fireworks, I mean, your livelihood or cattle. That should not be left to the people of Lawrence County to do another thing, so that they can do something on their homeland. I should not have to go, because bordering my land, we have one, two, three, four different people that I would have to go and find them, get them to sign a paperwork, and then have it on file? Where do we file that? Is there a system that y'all come up with? Is there a system to where we can go in and contact? What if they don't answer the phone? What if they don't do this? And then, like, that's my livelihood, that we have fireworks, and we shoot fireworks every random time. Because if you're trying to have new fireworks, you, perks of the job, you could try a firework. But I would have to do that every single time that we had a different firework coming in, so that we could settle that.
One more time, Dr. Williams. I, I, this is the first time I'd actually heard, I knew there was some things going on with horses. I grew up with horses, my sister rode her size across the country, drove all over southeast, dad. Had horses until, I guess I probably died at old age, because my sister and I moved out of the house. So I do sympathize, sympathize with where you're coming from, to an extent. But I also feel like we're punishing an entire county for some problems y'all are having in a very small portion of it. And we're seemingly punishing the people of the county for problems y'all are having with animals in a small portion of the county. I don't know what the solution is. I think, I do sympathize with where you are, and I think there's some way, I don't know, but I would hope there's some way to do it. But I don't know that putting an ordinance, you know, that's affecting kids and business owners and everybody else over an entire county at the right ends to that, you know, means to that end. That's just my opinion, but I do sympathize with you, but I just don't know that this is the right way to go about it. That's my feeling with the situation.
I say one more thing. I agree with it. You know, maybe that, like I said, maybe it can be that I still want, I would like to see Lawrence County have something that, that we do, like, I want to put my property into that no fireworks zone. And within so many feet of my property that it's not allowed, or they would have to come to me, you know, same type thing, and, and have that in Lawrence County, because most of these folks behind me ain't gonna do that. You know, maybe it won't affect the whole county. And maybe that would give us a solution to our issue, to where we're at, to where we're not affecting the whole county. I don't know if that's something y'all can do, you can discuss, or, or what it can be, but, you know, it is so different. It is so different than where they're at and where we're at. And, you know, I, I've never had this issue before, because I never had nothing up against me before. You know, we've always had our areas. And, and all horses are not created equal. Some of them are not gonna be as frightened, I tell you. Some of the high-strung, high-bred ones I have don't tolerate it very well. So, anyway, maybe y'all can come to some resolution with that. Thank you.
My name's Ashley Claire, I'm one of the owners of ABH Fireworks. So I have the ordinance here that is for the land, that if you want your firework, if you want your property in the no fireworks zone. And it says, "If authorized by a decision of the local governing body to extend the fireworks prohibited zone, I agree to identify the subject property and extended public property included in the fireworks prohibited zone on two signs or placards, measuring not less than 12 inches by 12 inches posted in conspicuous locations on the subject property." So it extends past, like, a certain, just past your property to another area.
The state.
I'm relating the state.
Yeah, but it, but you also have to re-pithering the state, that it's gonna get you, really, it, it comes over on your property. We're, we're not one that blasts it off beside our property, yet, but I'm saying, so there's.
We just said, no fireworks going.
Anyway, okay.
I'm just trying to help, I'm sorry. Go, you go. That's good, like, no, because I, I do understand your perspective. Thank you.
Y'all, I got a big mouth, and I just couldn't keep it shut tonight. I'm talking as a citizen of Lawrence County. You might not want me to sit down.
You can affect your name, please.
Luke Rankin, I've served on the county council for the past four years. It's been an honor and privilege, guys, to serve with y'all. I do not get fired up very often, certain things get me going. And we have been talking about this since July, and it came to my committee, where we try to find solutions. And I completely do sympathize with my friends over here, I completely sympathize with y'all. And we try to come up with solutions, you know, state code, you know, trying to figure out distance and narrowing down what livestock would, would include. The ordinance in its current form, I couldn't support the first two readings. I asked you guys to reconsider. I think there is some talk that's come out of tonight, where there could be a collaborative effort amongst the citizens to work this out. And I don't know what that would look like, but again, I think it's very dangerous as a county to set the precedent by passing something like this without some further discussion first, because it will affect small business owners. I know the folks that own that stand, they are awesome people. I've supported them ever since they really started that stand, for many, many years. And sharp kids, some of the best kids, they're gonna be fantastic business owners. But if this is the precedent we're gonna set, that in their industry, their business is gonna be negatively impacted by this, there's a lot at stake with this, buddy. And look, I, I hope that neighbors don't, if this does pass, I sure hope that neighbors aren't gonna weaponize this against neighbors that they don't like, call the sheriff's office and insist tickets be written against those neighbors. But believe me, we all have somebody that lives close to us that doesn't like us for some reason. And believe me, we all like to celebrate our freedoms on Fourth of July, and there's gonna be a lot of people lighting up sheriffs with fun. I'm a property rights guy, I will always defend that. Obviously, we have to be responsible, and when people are not responsible, they need to pay the consequences. But I just want people to know, I was gonna be quiet tonight, I've spoken very vehemently against this ordinance, both readings. I don't have an official voice tonight, and I will talk as a citizen. I think there is a solution, and I, I commend both sides coming out, voicing their opinions, and trying to work together, because that's what Lawrence County can really, we can really shine brightly by working together. And I, again, I commend both sides for, for coming out, speaking up, and being cordial and gracious to each other. I mean, this is a heated discussion, I think Nancy said, you know, great things. I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough decision, how do we move forward? But, you know, I kind of like what some of these folks were saying. Maybe there wasn't enough community engagement in this. And now that it's come to a third reading, I hate that it's taken this long before so many people were aware of it. But maybe there is some time now to come together and find a solution without it maybe being to the extent that this ordinance goes. So I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I'll be your state representative, I'll be fighting for you in Columbia. If you ever need anything, let me know, and thank you, Sheriff, for letting me speak.
Thank you, thank you. I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Rankin for his comments. We have not seen eye to eye on this issue. I would just like to say that it has been publicized, it's been talked about for several months at the committee meeting that Mr. Rankin chaired. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to say this, Mr. Rankin, as much as I like you, it was not open to public comment. The public could not come in, it was shut down, that's a fact. I would also like to say that it is a tough issue, but you folks deal with tough issues every month. Every month you deal with tough issues. Come this far with a tough issue, you've heard both sides, since not the first time you've heard opposition. It may be the first time for some of these folks to be here, you've heard opposition, and you've come this far. And doing the right thing is hard. But please stick with us through the third reading.
I'm gonna just call here on ordinance 976. So no one will close up here at 7:08. I'll open the floor for motion for the third final rating of ordinance 976 fireworks.
Ms. Chairman, I'm moving the third verdict, third reading approval of ordinance 976 fireworks ordinance.
Motion by Ms. Anderson, third, second one is Youngs. Now, begin with discussion. I'll start. To address a few of the questions that came up during public comments. As homes, the unincorporated areas includes everything outside of municipal limits, incorporated municipal limits. So that would be Lawrence, Clinton, Breakwater, Rockdale, and Waterloo, those are the ones inside. And that, that being said, the sheriff does still work inside some of those municipal limits, because they don't have their own police force. But that's unincorporated only is all the area outside of the incorporated cities and county. As my fellow council members know, as most folks in the audience, I've posed this with Mr. Rankin since the get-go. We talked about consideration of neighbors as, as the side for this. I think it is our duty as good neighbors to look out for our neighbors that have horses that react to fireworks. It shouldn't require a motion by, or an ordinance by county council to fix that problem. Somebody brought it up, I mean, it's four football fields, the requirements on shooting a firearm is 300 for rifles and 100 yards for shotguns. I was glad to learn, Mr. Cleveland, that the biggest fireworks only go 300 feet, that's football field. So while we're having to separate this by four, I'm not really sure. And I also agree that rifles out there are much louder than most fireworks that get shot around here.
Um, and I also agree that if rifles out there, much louder than most fireworks that get shot around here. Um, I haven't found soul in my district, District Four, that is, uh, in favor of this. Um, and I'm going to use, if you don't mind, Mr. Red for you as an example. Uh, my family owned the farm near yours. It would be within inside that twelve hundred feet. Um, now, when my grandfather was alive, I had no doubt of you to come at sixteen and ask to shoot fireworks. He said, "Yeah, no problem." But when he passed, my grandmother was, um, in Alzheimer's unit, Martha Franks, and the, uh, folks that governed the estate lived in Charlotte and Alexandria, Virginia. I'm not sure how you would have gotten their permission to be able to shoot fireworks.
Good.
Um, and that's a prime example of when we start hunting these property owners, not, um, the, look for these property owners. You know, that, that will become an issue. I mean, you couldn't, you wouldn't have got a whole science to get permission to shoot fireworks at your parents' farm. And, and heck, we bought, I've been about that farm from your family. And then we've been able to prevent you from shooting fireworks on your own property. Um, that's the kind of ridiculousness that I think that this ordinance, uh, entails. And, and Miss, and I appreciate you now being willing to look at the distance. I think the first ordinance you brought us was around fifteen hundred feet. Uh, so it, it has shrunk since your initial, uh, request. It's also a trunk and scope. Uh, I think I told you, Mr. Holmes, earlier, it's, it's much narrower than it originally was. Uh, but I still think it is far too much. Um, I think we have noise ordinances that govern the late night shooting. Um, I think we have, uh, to talk about the horse that got burned, that's a felony in the state of South Carolina. And I, I hope you called the sheriff. If you didn't, you should have. Um, but that's a felony. If anybody that causes harm to an animal, shooting fireworks at them and burning them, I think we qualify. I'm not a law enforcement officer or an attorney, but I sure would argue that point. It's a felony. The sheriff should have, uh, opened up a case, investigated it, and prosecuted whoever the heck did it, because that's absolutely ridiculous. Um, and I don't think anybody should ever shoot and firework at an animal, period. Um, and if they do, they should be charged for it. I know how the sheriff feels about animals. Um, and I have the dogs and anything. I know what he would do to somebody if he caught, got a hold of them after they did it. And that's what should happen. Um, I'm going to vote against this again this evening, uh, like I have, um, uh, so far to this point. And I, I hope that some of my council members will have heard some of the comments tonight and, uh, see how ridiculous this ordinance is.
So, I don't agree that it's ridiculous. However, there are some things I think we could do to it to make it more palatable and to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. What I've heard tonight between the two sides is there needs, there's concern about, one, the distance of that, and two, it needs to be complaint driven. So if there was a way to say, within, we, we reference rifles, three hundred yards or three hundred feet, right?
Over three hundred yards.
Three hundred yards. Um. So if, if that stands and everybody was all right with that, that distance would stand fine with me in my mind. But also complaint driven. So there are people who own pastures with live pastured livestock, like actively pastured. That was one of the things in the language, they have to actively have animals on it. Not just a fence where you could keep animals, but there are actual animals present. And then, within a certain amount of distance from that, if it, there was a complaint, I can get behind that. So if you had actively pastured livestock within a distance and somebody's shooting fireworks and there is an actual complaint, I think there should be a mechanism for law enforcement come out and do something about that. There will be plenty of your friends that have livestock or others that don't care, that you could shoot whatever. And if they don't call a complaint, then it's not a thing. But there are people in different parts of the community that have livestock that are affected by the fireworks. And they have nothing that really protects them. And this was an attempt to try to find something that would work within, uh, some legislation that was already there. The, the state's legislation really doesn't solve that problem. If you shoot into the property, and then even if you extended things, uh, that didn't fix it, counting on a homeowners association to have rules that prevents this, uh, we, that's not something that would work either, because we don't have control over their homeowner association rules and we can't force their rules to say certain things. And, uh, so I, I think it, it's, it's a good attempt at solving a problem on both sides. I would love for this to go back to committee if possible and let us tweak a few things. I have some amendments I can make tonight, but I want it to be a good document that's had a conversation. Both sides can participate, and then we get something that, that helps all our citizens and protects people that are trying to make a living from this and people who are trying to make a living from agriculture. That's affects both are practically businesses that are being, uh, negatively impacted. And I, I'm sensitive to both of those sides, but I'm not afraid to make a decision to protect people that are being victimized by current things that are happening. Just because you can do something to your neighbor doesn't mean you should. And so this is one of those things that, um, I'd hate to really say it, but you're, there is violence upon animals with these large explosions that come and things. And, uh, that's not what we want to do either. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know how you could assign this to a committee or back to a committee, or we can make amendments to the current, um, ordinance.
I would like, I like to say, we can table, but I like to say something also regarding it. Because the whole ordinance, if you look at the purpose of the ordinance, it is to ensure the safety and the welfare of the citizens as well as livestock. It's not pulling between two people. It's not pulling between people who have livestock and people who are small business owners. What we're trying to do is trying to come to an agreement so we all can live in the same community and live like we should live. And it takes everybody working together to make it happen. I'm glad you can come look now and see that all it takes is conversation to bring something together so you can talk about it. All along, nobody said anything but the people who were suffering. And they were looking for an answer. All of a sudden, you know, people who, uh, didn't like what they were asking and saying it. But all we need to do is talk and we can try to do something to make it work out. Uh, and it's good to hear the conversation without having, uh, someone get angry. Uh, I, but that was our main purpose. And I think that should continue to be our purpose, is to look out for the welfare of the citizens that are involved because, and also the livestock that's involved. We take care of dogs every day. And, uh, so we shouldn't leave, uh, the others off either. So, uh, we can, uh, ask if we want to table it, ask everyone to have their comments, uh, for a period of time, we, as, um, reading on it.
Move to table, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion to table by Mr. Trimmel.
Yeah.
Second by Ms. Clark. Is there any discussion on the motion to table?
When will the issue come back?
I'd like to have a bit, like, sometime.
That's a motion to postpone. If we motion to table and it is not brought back off the table at January meeting, it will die.
Correct, Mr. Turner.
If you want to, if you want to impose those restrictions, yes, but just a motion to table, there is no time limit.
But it won't die at the next meeting, though, will it? Can we, um?
It would, it would only die if there was a time limit that was set on the motion.
We can always pull it back off the table.
Right, unless the ruling of the chair says otherwise.
Okay.
It's stormy with your gavel, so I'm not going to be able to close it.
All right, so we have a motion.
It's going to be additional debate would be to refer this matter back to a committee as opposed to table.
I have a motion of chair. Those are, all right, a motion to table, I've been withdrawn. Back to the original motion to approve third final report, nine seventy six. And then, or, or?
I'd like to make an amendment that we send the, I'd like to make a motion that I like to move that we refer ordinance nine seventy six back to committee.
Two seconds, we'll take Mr. Carroll. Motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Carroll to refer ordinance nine seventy six back to committee. That committee was committee on public safety. All right, I will also request, well, we have a motion to table. Their discussion on the motion to refer to committee.
About, if it goes back to committee, is there a timeline? That's when we have to make our decision on which order.
That'll be up to the chairman of that committee on when they meet and then whatever comes out of that committee.
Is it a timeline as when council, both on one word?
Not to my will.
If it goes back to meeting, will it take one month, two months, if it's still come back to whole county?
That's correct. I think it can come back in the same form, or that committee may alter it, or may, may recommend an amendment. But what would most likely happen is this will go back to a committee. The committee will convene, they'll deliberate, and then most likely somebody will make a motion to send an amended version back to county council. County council will vote on whatever version comes back, if any. Just for full transparency, uh, we roll over to the council, January one. So that committee, nor is chairman, will be set until at least our January meeting, if not the February meeting. Are there any further discussion or questions on the motion by Ms. Anderson to refer ordinance nine seventy six to the committee on public safety? And then I'll call for a vote, uh, to refer that to committee. All those who are fairly ready, raise your right hand. Pass the fixed, he wrote, uh, one or, once it happens, and we set a committee and a committee chair, I would request that public comments be, um, taken at that committee. Public comments are not a normal course of business necessarily at a committee meeting. However, given the gravity of this particular ordinance, I think it would be appropriate and would be a request of, uh, as a council member, to have those. All right. All right, next, we have public hearing for ordinance nine seventy three, which is on Project Ponderosa. Seven twenty four, I'll open the floor for public hearing on ordinance nine seventy three. No one will close public hearing? Next is item eighty, second reading on ordinance nine seventy three for Project Ponderosa people.
What is approved, ordinance nine seventy three on second reading?
I have a motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Mr. Trimmel. Is there any discussion? And I'll call for a vote. All those who are fairly ready, raise your right hand. That's a six. Up next, we have public hearing for ordinance nine seventy four, which is amending Dr. Gun Multi-County Industrial Park to include Project Ponderosa. Uh, now, seven twenty five, and we'll open the floor, uh, with it's nine seven four. No one will propose public hearing? And I'll open the floor for second reading on ordinance nine seventy four, amending Dr. Gun Multi-County Industrial Park to include Project Ponderosa. Motion by Ms. Anderson for second reading approval, nine seventy four, second by Mr. Carroll. Is there any discussion? Uh, well, fairly ready, right hand. This switches are approving twenty twenty five, any council meeting scheduled?
Chairman, I think y'all, you know, Saturday mornings.
Do not recognize the much of the thing.
It does, with the lack of saying.
All right. I don't see any oddities. Uh, continue what this schedule was made on the second Monday of each month. Motion to approve county council meeting schedule as presented. Motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Ms. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call for a vote. All those who are fairly ready, raise your right hand. Next up is approved resolution twenty four dash forty five, which is Project Portland's Induction Agreement. Uh, Mr. Coleman can be with us this evening, but he did email, um, this is a twenty-two million dollar project. Um, with, uh, expecting twenty-two new jobs located, uh, the side of thirty-five, near exit sixteen. That motion is approved. Resolution twenty twenty four dash forty five for the industrial agreement for Project Portland. Question by Mr. Carroll. Second by Ms. Clark. Any discussion? And I'll call for a vote. All those who are fairly ready, raise your right hand. He wrote, he's actually also, for, uh, project, the first, uh, ordinance. Nine seventy eight, perfect reading on Project Portland's people. I'm waiting to approve, or it's not second, I'll per read. All right, second by Mr. Carroll. Is there any discussion? And I'll call for a vote. All those who are fairly ready, raise your right hand. Substitutes, yeah, that is ordinance nine seventy seven, which is amending Dr. Gun Multi-County Industrial Park to include Project Portland. Motion for free of ordinance nine seventy seven. Motion by Mr. Carroll.
Thank you.
Second by Ms. Trimmel. There any discussion? And I'll call for a vote. I'm fairly ready, raise your right hand. That's a six. Up next, we have the twenty twenty four dash forty six, amending Lawrence County Hazard Medication Plan to include Lawrence County Water and Sewer. Phil, would you like to comment? Would you grab that door pretty quick? Sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, good evening. Appreciate it to allow myself to be here tonight, especially along with. Appreciate it to allow myself to be here tonight, especially along the agenda. A good, long, healthy discussion as well, so hopefully it takes you long. Lawrence real commission is seeking to amend or add to the county mitigation mitigation plan to include us as a stakeholder in that ever. Really giving us the ability to be part of that discussion, to help everybody prepare, mitigate, and cover for natural human hazards that could impact our infrastructure. As you guys know, ladies know that we are the Lawrence County Supervisor for the Snook and Fortune in Lawrence County. Our infrastructure is credited for health, safety, and maintenance of the region. And including us in this hazard mitigation plan will help ensure alignment with the regional hazard mitigation goals. And able to commission to more importantly access federal funding opportunities. Particularly the FY twenty four building resilient infrastructure and community, which are what we call Brick Ranch. They're administered by FEMA. So this will help us take on projects that will help reduce risk and build long-term resiliency against disasters and safeguarding essential infrastructure for our residents. The amendment of future planning activities will include risk and vulnerability assessments, mitigation strategies, and stakeholder collaboration. And kind of give everybody the schedule from a scheduling standpoint, how it works typically. As the draft amendment is completed, we're working on that, actually, when I think we finish that over the weekend. That will go to South Carolina Emergency Management Division for their approval, there's a thirty day review typical thirty day review process. And then that goes on to FEMA for review and approval. And once FEMA and S E M D approve it, it comes back to the county for final approval. Check all those boxes and then we are to adopt it as a commission. We do have a draft copy of the amendment, as I say, was approved over the weekend concurrently, so we finally got all our eyes on it and team across. So we're happy to leave that county staff so they can review concurrently at the state and county folks are looking at it. But that's really the process in hand, I would like to thank Thomas and Wes and Rebecca Bagwell, so let up for their efforts up to this point to be able to get us here tonight. We honestly started working on it, this is not directly related to Hurricane Helene. We started working on this over the summertime and Helene kind of disrupted that skating. It took a month and a half off of our plate, and so we're really kind of unfortunately under a bit of a sense of urgency. We anticipate that the application window for Brick Ranch for next year will open up first quarter. And we cannot apply for funding until all of these approval processes have been taken care of, so if we have a project in hand, it will be a new. Two million gallon water storage facility at our water treatment facility, what we call Clearwell. That will be our project that we will be working on this application, and so. I do appreciate everybody working to get us on the agenda tonight, given the time involved, and I'm happy to answer any questions. We do have our consultant Brandon Smith with us, he's a disaster recovery specialist with Gilbert Mills and Kaywood. So he helped us with our amendment and will be available throughout the process, so any questions?
Are there any questions from the council?
What you just specifically referenced, the storage facility, how will that impact, what what positive things will that bring to the county?
So we need more storage, we've had with the growth, we need more storage, but when we have. For long hour outage, or when we have a drought, or when we have like we had a couple of years ago with an extended period of very, very cold temperatures and everybody's dripping water. That can create huge spikes in our demand. And they sometimes can coincide, I mean, your water quality is not at its best. Having range, you have, you know, more stuff you have to remove about like Greenwood, so giving us more storage allows us to sort of. Weather those events at a more steady treatment pace. So we're not worried about repeat chemicals or worried about trying to keep up with the demand. We have stores right now about one point five L G B van gallons. So an additional two will allow us to sort of shave off those peaks and weather those bits. We've done great so far, but you never know. So this puts us in a position to ensure that reliability.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate all the work and service to the county. Great job and excited for very things to come. Thank you. So I'll open the floor for most of the present twenty twenty four dash forty six. To amend Lawrence County Hazard Mitigation Plan to include Lawrence County Water.
Want to approve?
Second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? And I'll call for a vote, all those who are fairly ready, raise your right hand. Pass the six. All right, thank you. All right. Last but not least, we're coming to county council comments. Backward this evening, that is all right. Um. I appreciate folks coming out tonight and speaking on both sides of the powers ordinance. It's great to have citizens engaged and to hear from both sides. I encourage you to stay engaged, there'll be announcements on paper as well on website. Next year, once we do set the committee and the committee plans their their meeting. As I requested, I hope they will have public comments at those meetings to continue to get input from all sides and come up with a solution. That may be palatable or determine the need, one thing I will say that I should have said in earlier comments. I'd also like to see the sheriff's office have an opportunity to address the specific issues we've seen. I don't. We had a lot of things happen in fourth of July, and there hasn't been another big holiday. For us to see how well, I think they do a great job, and I think there's going to be more issues that come out, and it'll give them an opportunity. To show what they can do with current ordinances and state laws that exists on books. It is the month of December, Christmas is here. We wish everyone, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, it's the time to reflect, we just had Thanksgiving, which I thought everyone enjoyed. And we found something to be memorable before. Let's remember those who Christmas that are less fortunate than us, there are multiple organizations throughout the county. That have opportunities to just pay in to help those less fortunate. I encourage everyone to do so. As they see fit, again, I welcome our newly elected officials and their capacities, thank y'all for coming to the meeting this evening as well. Meeting attended in the past, we look forward to serving with you. Now. I'd like to say a few words, start with Mr. Trevor. Mr. Trevor has diligently served this county council, not just now, but also in the past. David, I thank you for your friendship, your service to this county, it's a privilege to serve with you. You were doing things for this community for our own, long for our own. Service like the city in multiple capacity, you serve at the state house level. Your patriotism for Lawrence County goes above and beyond most normal council members. For your continued dedicated service and I have no doubt that you'll continue your unity in many capacities throughout and. No, obviously you're out and about in different arenas and whether it be PC, or YMCA, or Rotary, or anything, you may find yourself involved in. I look forward to having an opportunity to serve with you in different places. Thank you all, all you've done for this county, your services, your services. Then of course, Ms. Anderson. I'm gonna say it down here. Ms. Anderson as well. More than a pleasure to serve with you. You taught me a lot when I came on, continue to teach me every every day as we address issues and. Appreciate, you know, I've always been on the same side of an issue, but have always been able to cordially express our views and. Solutions made, whether I was on the prevailing side or you were, we continue to work together on other things. Ms. Anderson started her career in politics in eighty four, serving on school in fifty six. And that makes it forty years. Willingly and selflessly served the citizens of this great county. You're relevant here. In your service here at ninety seven. You've served as vice chairwoman. That's all with a full-time job at Wind Center, serving those that are all as fortunate as us for that, that should be commended. Your volunteerism with your ladies of bravery VFW, that were in the eastern eastern star. You served for many, many years on the representative council governments, COG, the screen presented here this evening. You served the Lawrence County Higher Education. A massive part of that, for that, I appreciate all that you've done to bring that to our county to the point today where we're now. Any resident of Lawrence County can get a two-year degree, people might take a four-year degree here locally for free. And you started that when you did what you did for the higher education center that was the. Beginning of what we have today, future scholars that allow our residents and our citizens of this county to earn an education if they so choose in whatever capacity they can. In addition, all your service here locally on county council, you've served SEAC board member sixteen years. We're seeing those meetings still. There are multiple committees, too many to name all those, but most importantly. You were the president of the association from two thousand nine, two thousand ten, which is a major, major deal to be voted amongst your peers to serve entire state of South Carolina. And for that, and seeing what those guys go through, that was a big deal in the news you made during those rough years, those tough years. For the counties throughout the state, for your leadership to those, I know it's appreciated by many, but there's not enough thanks that I can say. Or enough words that I can put on the table to thank you for all you've done for the citizens of Lawrence County over these forty years, and I know that you're not going away either. And I know you will continue to serve, focus in your community, and continue to represent Lawrence County as you make your travels, and I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate all you've done. The appreciate Mr. West, Mr. That's keeping me in line on the ordinances, Henry Lawrence's applications start first of the year and go through April. Make awards in June, and I will personally be making a nomination for you, Ms. Anderson. To recognize all the amazing things you did for Lawrence County throughout your service here.
Can I have a point of privilege?
Why don't you speak last two?
No, I'm happy. All right, but I do appreciate the citizens of District Six for giving me the opportunity to participate. In the legislative process of serving in Lawrence County, and I have thoroughly enjoyed, nothing but joy, and I have learned to. A lot from just being in the in the space that I'm in. I hope that I have served District Six well, as well as the entire county, because I don't believe we are apart. Like a pie with seven slices. We are whole, and when we all work together like we did here this evening, we make a whole, and when one. Group of us feel good, we've got to learn how to stroke the others so they can feel good also. Because all of us, our needs are very similar. We are not different that much, other than our personality and our traits. But our needs and our concerns are basically the same. And we got the, and we was put here on this earth to live together, so we need to learn how to live together as citizens of Lawrence County. I hope I served the whole county as well as District Six, it has been enjoyed, I have truly been blessed. And I thank you for all the blessings, I have grown a lot because number one is that I didn't know all of you. But our path is crossed, and I think we'll never be the same. When our paths cross each other, so it has all been joy, and so I thank you for the opportunity, Lawrence County for serving, and I'll continue to be doing something. I believe in giving back, because that's just the way I was raised.
Yes, sir. So I know government, a lot of the times, is not very, well, sometimes is entertaining, but it's not really something that everybody gets involved in unless there is something that impacts them directly. So I'm glad we were able to come together tonight on an issue. That I think we can solve, we can fix something, Lawrence County is both. Urban and rural, like in the same group, and so things you try to apply to one don't always apply well to the other and vice versa, and as. I'll fall on the sword because I've been here. When some of the approvals went through from the subdivisions and some were before my time, but. Those were decisions that were made to approve things that now we're living with the impact, and so. It's fair to say that we've made decisions that have consequences, and so we have an opportunity or an obligation, if you will. To make sure that we stop disparate impact on citizens when we can, and that we're making positive, smart changes for the future. And so at the end of December, with this group being together for two years, I think we did some good work on that. We've made changes to the subdivision ordinances, we've got some committees going, we're involving the community more, I would encourage you. To stay on the website monthly, to read the minutes of the meetings, to kind of stay plugged in, if you will. On the things that are going on, because you'll see something that impacts you or interesting to you that won't always get. Given to you in a in a blast or a call or an email, and maybe that's something we can work on too. To making those things more accessible to our citizens. And so that you don't feel so disconnected if you can't come to the meetings. I I do thank Mr. Trevor, Ms. Anderson, and Luke for the service this past two years together. I thought we worked well together, we didn't always agree, and we won't always agree. But we're fair and we listen to each other, and I think it's been a positive. Time that we've had, I look forward to our new council, as we start in January, it'll have its own flavor, I promise you, it's going to. Every time you get new people, you get on a different way of doing things, and so I look forward to seeing what we can do starting in January, but. I thank you all for being in attendance and for allowing me to participate, and I hope everyone has a great year.
Ms. Clark.
I'm just gonna say details of everything that's said. Thank all of you for coming out tonight, and it's good to. Come together to agree and to disagree and to learn from each other, we got to take this at heart. We've been through a lot in twenty twenty four, we've just come through this storm, and it all, and it always gonna be good. But we made it through, and that's the way we got to come together tonight and listen to each other, to connect with our neighbor. Right, and we're not always agree, but we can love each other, because we have a giving heart, a kind. And that's the way God wants to be, so I'd say Merry Christmas to all, and a prosper new year, be safe, be blessed, and spend time with your family, thank you.
I've got a comment, I'm gonna go in entirely different directions to where we've been going in. This has been haunting my mind for a while, something get on my mind. And what I'd like to address, and I know everybody in council heard it, is that our bridge situation in West County. I would like to see this council, I would like to see this council to address the twelve bridges that are out. These bridges have been out from anywhere from two months to five, six years. It's human nature, it says if something doesn't inconvenience you. Or you don't see it, or it don't cost you anything, do it the way. And I feel this may be the reason we've happened to address our bridges. I've lived here now since I've lived where I am now since nineteen eighty one. Park Road Bridge about two times, and it's now is out now. The forty three years that I have lived where I'm at, it's been out twenty percent of the time, and I think we need to do better. And there's four other good reasons. That we need to tend to these bridges, people affected by these averages, driving two, three, four miles out of their way every day. You get from point A to point B, maybe two or three times, four times a day, six or seven days a week, three years. Do the math on the financial cost, as far as gas, time, whatnot. Second one is delay of first responders, please fire EMS. Five minutes delay time because of a bridge out could be a life or death situation. Second one is delay of first responders, police fire EMS, five minutes delay time because of a bridge out, could be a life or death situation. Inconvenience from day to day. And it creates a staging area for illegal bores on. When a person knows nobody's, nobody's coming down the road, that's a good place to party, a lot of times the party gets bad. Couple of years back, we put a, I'm gonna call it a road tax, to help the county with needed revenue to do small paving jobs in county property. Supposedly, it's to help with our bridges, but what I have found out was the bridge, the word bridge never was mentioned in this tax, whatever you wanna call it. But if it does, this tax didn't create enough money for both asphalt and bridge repair. We should drive, make ourselves independent of running down to Columbia and begging for money to build bridges. Getting the money from Columbia won't fix the problem, and that's, and that's just a temporary, bridges will always be, will always need repairing and replaced. We should make ourselves independent of having to beg Columbia to give the money to fix the bridge. Mr. Chairman, what I'd like for you to do, whoever, is assign someone's task, creating some type of plan or tax to create a revenue to keep our infrastructure intact, at least give council a chance to go on. One tax season won't come close to fixing our bridges, you gotta start somewhere to solve the problem you face. The county needs to step up, I believe, and take care of this bridge.
I'm gonna second your comments and allow it to stand, yes, chairman.
Last, we are in the Christmas season, and really, right now, we are observing Advent, and some of the. Spirits of Advent is hope, and I hope all of us have it. Joy, peace, and love, and I hope we experience all of this during this Christmas holiday in some form or fashion. So I just want to wish each of you a Merry Christmas, and each of you a happy and prosperous new year. For twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Miss Anderson. Thank you, Ty, for your humble years out, and I would like to have those opportunities. For our folks in Germany, I would like to say one, one more thing, and that's thank you to our administration and our staff, and all those that. For seventy-three, give or take a few employees in this county, from every department up and down the line, our services are long for them. Our folks in the office, Rosen Bridges, been a long year, somebody up here, our twenty twenty-fourth been, been a rough one. It has, and our folks have stepped up to the plate every single time, we're blessed with the boys we have. There are places to lay our thanks and appreciation down, down the ladder to your staff, and folks in the office and outside. I look forward to a very prosperous twenty twenty-five, and all the great things we'll do. As being said, I will call for motion to adjourn. I'd like your second motion by Mr. Carroll, all those who prepare, please raise your right hand. Are you? Six to zero. Merry Christmas to all of you, and I look forward to seeing you in twenty twenty-five.
You do, buddy. I appreciate you.
Well, last guy that said hurdle.